First floor and bedrooms upstairs. And just today, they did have HOA approval. There's our architectural review committee within the Gateway Green HOA to actually approve the plans shown here, which actually has a significantly shifted rear elevation, which was one of the comments, I think that was one of the concerns of the planning commission during that review where they recommended approval of this PUD amendment. There was some concerns about meeting the original PUD criteria. And I'll just to kind of show you what the planning commission reviewed is this. So quite a bit shift as far as the roof line, exterior materials, increased architectural, you know, just more, more things of architectural interest. So this is the application before you is to amend to this is a rear elevation and this is a front elevation. The, and if I could, while I'm just within this screen, again, show you the existing lot lines, you know, for the, for those two lots and then the proposed. It was a little larger, but well, the lots are virtually similar, but actually it's cut more equal out to the 28 foot wide, 25, 25 and 28. So the C engineer did review the, these plans and had a comment that the sidewalks around the development need to be constructed and that's part of the original Gateway Green approval. And also a piece of this is that the applicant is seeking a waiver of the park dedication fee. As part of the 2004 approval, original developer did write a, pay the parkland dedication fee. At that time, it was a fee of $1,500 versus the current $2,500 per unit. So originally they paid 2,000, I'm sorry, 3,000 and the cost now for two units, and this is for each new, new lot created as part of a subdivision. Then the new parkland dedication fee would be 5,000. So, and they, and the original developer paid three. So staff recommendation on that is that they're actually, that the developer pay 2,000 to meet the, the current fee schedule requirement for the parkland dedication fee. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from city council.
Thank you, Donovan. Any council members, any questions you may have? And is there anybody from the project team here this evening that would like to speak?
I'm here, Dan Brown.
Very good. Maybe let's take, take council questions first and then we'll see if, happy to hear any comments you may want to add as well. Council, any questions for staff before we hear from Mr. Brown? Council member Gerard?
I noticed in the resolution, there's no comments regarding the park dedication fee reduction. So if we wanted to do that, would we need two motions tonight? One for the resolution to approve and then one for the reduction in the park dedication?
That's correct, yeah. Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Gerard. You do have before you resolution 07272001, which is for the PUD amendment and the minor subdivision, for your consideration. And the, the fee waiver, which since fees are within, you know, within jurisdiction of city council, that would require a separate motion.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question related to fees. I know sometimes those are evaluated by parks, lakes and trails and there is a, there's a recommendation that's made. In this case, because it's a change in fees, was this considered by parks, lakes and trails? And is there a recommendation by them that we should consider?
They did not. This was one that was kind of in the midst of applications, everything that I didn't put it before them.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions of staff on the application before we hear from Mr. Brown?
No, I think my biggest issue of concern was the HOA review and ensuring that they were in agreement with the new plan. I also had the question about the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission reviewing that reduction. I'm assuming, just based on what I'm hearing Donovan, that you're kind of grandfathering this in from 2004? Is that in essence what we're proposing here?
Um, yeah, well, piece of, I mean, I actually did put the question to Amanda, who then said, you know, it's actually proper not to charge them twice. So I think that there might even legal issue with that one. But going back and looking at the original record, the, the parkland dedication fee was 1,500. So there is, there's a gap between the 2004 fee and the 2020 fee.
Thank you. Maybe let's take a moment and hear from Mr. Brown, any comments you may have for council this evening? And then we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Great, thank you for your time tonight. So we did spend some time working with planning commission and listen to their concerns on the building. We made those changes and I think we've got a project that the HOA is proud of and I think will fit in great up there.
That's great. Thank you. Council members, any, I don't, any further questions? I don't have any further questions. I also wanted to hear about the, thank you for, council member Beistrom for mentioning the HOA, that was on my mind as well and that's well covered in the materials. I had a logistics question around approval of the fee reduction, but my questions on those have been answered. I'm happy to entertain a motion. The, the resolution suggested by staff is on page 88 of your packet. And again, that is resolution 07272001. And then we would do a second motion if there was a motion wanting to grant the fee reduction.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to the resolution number 0727-20-01, resolution approving a PUD amendment and minor subdivision for great Gateway Green Plan Unit Development.
I'll second it, Mur.
Motion by council member Gerard and a second by council member Husnick. Any further discussion this evening? Hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Beistrom?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. The second, the second component of that question before us this evening related to Gateway Green, I would motion that we grant the fee waiver as suggested by staff.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second by council member Beistrom. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, Karen, could we get a roll call vote on, on the fee reduction waiver?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Beistrom?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Brown. Good luck with your project.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Next item on our agenda this evening is resolution 707272002, Minnesota Lake Self-Storage Preliminary Planned Unit Development and Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application. There is also a fee waiver request on this one. And Donovan, do you want to kick us off on discussion?
Certainly. I'd like to present the preliminary PUD application and comp plan amendment application for the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage Facility. This also is located on the west side of, of 35 and just south of Gateway Green. Coincidentally, it's currently a 17 or around 17 acre vacant parcel on predominantly wetlands. And this is one that I'm actually kind of bringing in a little bit, you know, you're coming into this somewhat in the middle of the, the story here because this has been the subject of a conditional use permit process with the, with the planning commission and the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up my staff memo here. And this, so you're actually coming upon this after the, the planning commission has considered it, deliberated around impacts on neighbors since it's adjoining the Gateway Green Residential as well as single family homes to the west. And the project team really respond, did respond to the planning commission and the public in crafting the, the project that you see before you. This is something, a simplified version, just for illustrative purposes. It's 320, proposes 324 units. And access is from this part of Everton, you know, single access. There's a fence around it all. And with these drive aisles for, you know, different size of self-storage units with stormwater ponds, this, this is the subject of a wetland replacement application that Rice Creek Watershed already approved to actually impact some wetlands. But, and, but the, right now, the, what is proposed is compliant with wetland rules and setbacks. And there was a good bit of discussion around that north end of the property that is currently wooded. And the, this development proposal, the owner Dick Biagini and architect Jerry Anderson, who are with us on this call, are, did propose to retain that, those trees as a buffer. So that is part of this application before you. So this was all part of the CUP and it, there's a series of uses within, within the, the, within the zoning code for, specifically for self-storage units. And the, the PUD before you relates mostly to the number of structures. And when there's more than one planned unit development, I'm sorry, more than one structure, a planned unit development, PUD application is required. And this is the preliminary stage of that review. You know, if they make it, if they have received the approval from the preliminary review, which was recommended by planning commission on June 24th, then it will go to a final PUD review. And so that is, that's the, the PUD section of it. Also before you is a comprehensive plan amendment application. And this seeks to change the, the long, the guided land use from high density residential to highway, this highway commercial. And there are several properties in the 2040 plan that were also shifted. One was directly west of Custom, Custom Old Design. One was kind of on the way and then Timber Ridge, the owner for Timber Ridge proposed the comp plan amendment to change that to high density residential. And these are, all properties had been in, with that highway commercial, you know, future land use and B2 zoning. But it, it appeared that these were not favorably located for business, business use. All three is do have large wetland impacts. So is with that in mind, that staff and the, the comp plan task force did recommend, you know, this shift to high density residential all along this Everton corridor. This is something I had discussed with Dick Biagini, starting in January of 2019. And he had submitted a couple of plans for a high density residential, just concept plans, anticipating this change to high density residential. Then finding it not feasible, he did, he shifted to the, to the self-storage use, which is a conditional use within that, the B2 business district. Well, between January 19 and then through April 2020, the future land use plan changed to high density residential. And in the meantime, I had told Mr. Biagini that that change was happening and sent him a series of emails stating what, what are the missing pieces of the application and what he needed to get an application in. And unfortunately, he did not get the application in prior to the comp plan adoption. And so that change did occur. So when he did apply in the end of April for these applications, the comp plan amendment was, was included. And this is, one piece of this is that, you know, Mr. Biagini now is, asked for a fee waiver, a $4,000, the $4,000 comp plan amendment application fee, which staff recommends denial of that waiver because of, I do believe that he was informed of it. And, and though he, you know, I think there was good reasons on his end as far as he did get a, a series of Rice Creek Watershed District approvals. Still, he was aware and, you know, didn't submit this, plans for this, the self-storage units until after that comp plan change. And the recommendation is for the, for council to authorize a submittal of the comp plan amendment to the Met Council, which is the first step here. And this is really what this resolution 707272002 is for, is to authorize that and initiate that process of Met Council review. And the, you know, preliminary PUD recommend, recommendation of approval is contingent upon a successful review with the comp plan amendment to shift the property from high density, high density residential to highway commercial. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from council.
Donovan, quick question for you. Are you, and maybe if in the packet and I'm just not seeing it, can you, can you zone it or kind of provide a, a kind of a, a more neighborhood perspective of zoning? What I'm, the question I want to see is how this highway commercial fits in with existing zoning of the surrounding neighborhood? Do you have that view that you can put in front of us?
I can do the view, but is it, is it the zoning I look at or is it the future land use plan? Which would-
I'm sorry, future, yeah, no, it's more future land use. What I'm trying to just get a picture of is the amount of land space that we're considering for this as being highway commercial versus what the existing, what the neighborhood land use looks like.
Okay, so I'll, I'll share that.
Well, Donovan's pulling that up. My suggestion for this evening is, here's a, much like we did with the last consideration and last agenda item, council Q and, initial Q and A to staff, invite the applicant to speak and then bring it back to council.
So before you is the, the 2040 adopted future land use plan, where this is the subject property here in this, you know, brown color. And you can see, here's Timber Ridge to the north here. Here's the property, if you can see my cursor moving. Here's the property just to the west of Custom Old Design on, on that west side of Everton. This tan is low to medium density residential, or otherwise known as MXR1. This blue is the MinDOT storage yard there with the big salt shed.
Yep.
And then this other red is the highway commercial. So you can see it's really grouped around, you know, the interstate, the larger retailers, car dealerships, hotels, that sort of thing. And so what's, what the, the comp plan amendment proposed to do is to shift, turn this into that, you know, ruby red color shown elsewhere here.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, approximately 15 or 17 acres, which probably is only about six acres of high ground on that, on that lot.
Thank you, that, yep, that's helpful. Council members, other questions for staff of this item? Any other questions? Donovan, I know this, refresh my memory on process for these. I know the, does the planning commission make an actual vote or does planning commission make a recommendation for council?
Planning commission makes a recommendation on both of these applications and they both recommended unanimously on, at the June 24th meeting. Yes.
That was going to be my question is what that vote was, if it was unanimous. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Bain?
Council member, council member Gerard?
I don't have a question, just a comment. There was a number of meetings regarding this plot of land and I have to commend the developer, the planning commission and the neighbors for working together.
The neighbors.
We have here is a project that is acceptable to all parties. I don't think any of the three parties got everything they wanted, which probably makes it a pretty good deal. The developer, he reduced the number of units and increased the wooded, which is what the residents were hoping for. They currently look out on this wetland, so it's their preference to have this mini storage versus a five or six story apartment building, which would generate a lot more traffic and whatnot. And the planning commission, I think, did a really good job getting, leading the discussion to get them to this point. And I really have to commend the developer for all the work he put in.
Thank you for that, council member Gerard. I was able to watch, I'm not sure all of the planning commission meetings related to this topic, but a number of them. And also echo your comments and also echo, kudos to the, it was a fairly highly engaged neighborhood group and in this remote format, I think we collected good feedback and came to a good result. So echo those comments. Maybe I'll transition here and give the applicant an opportunity to speak. Mr., I'm gonna butcher your name, is it Biagini? Biagini? Welcome. We're glad you're here. Do you have a few comments for council this evening?
I was just really happy, Mr. Gerard, to have you add the comments that you just did because that was a big part of what we did for the last two months was, we were concerned about the neighborhood meeting part of this process. And that, that particular part of the process ended up leading us out into the field and meeting individually with the neighbors that surround this property on the west and the north side. And we spent many, many evenings and many, many hours out meeting with those neighbors. And we also feel that the final version of this project that you have before you is a, a part of those changes, those concerns and taking into account not only concerns of the neighbors, but also some of the comments and concerns from the planning commission itself. And so this final version that you have in front of you, we feel is a win-win for all of those parties as well. I would like to, to say that during the course of our, our work on the planning of this, back when we were working on the housing portion of this, we were told by planning staff that there was a possibility that the land use in this particular piece of property could change, that it was under consideration, that it could possibly be changed in the future. That was the last thing we heard about. We never received any direct communications that change was taking place. And, and so the reason we're asking for this is that the, the proper zoning and the proper planning of, or land use was in place at the time when we started this process and we were working with city, city staff. And so we got interrupted in that process because we were told we had to go get the Rice Creek Watershed approvals and the state approvals. And so all of a sudden, we spent eight months in the middle of this process, running down these other approvals before we could submit for PUD, CUP applications. And so the CPA came out of that as part of the process toward the very end in April.
Thank you for that and this perspective. Council, any questions of the applicant this evening? Seeing council member Beistrom?
Yeah, I, I don't really have any, I have one question related to the seven foot fence. Is that still, is that still part of the project even with the, even with the, you leaving the, the wooded area in place? Is there still going to be some kind of privacy fence?
There is, but those, the, the way that that went was the property owners along the north side didn't want a fence on the fence, on the property line because it's like 12 feet off their patio, so they were going to be looking at a blank wall. And so what we agreed to, they said they would rather, because the residential character of our buildings, they would rather see the fences between the buildings so that the building became part of the fence of the security. And then the fence between the buildings is where we're actually placing the fence along that north side. There is fencing along the west side that's pulled in also from the property line. So we're trying to increase the setbacks and leave as much of the woods in the natural area and setting there for them as possible. And then in addition to that, along the back of the buildings of, on the east and the west side of the north end, we have arborvitae's that we've been adding so that, that will add a part of a visual screen where the buildings actually do exist and the units look out onto those buildings. And then again, on the south and the west end, we have added arborvitae's along with fencing there so that, so that, well, the fencing is behind at that point, so the wildlife can't get in and chew these things up. But the houses on the west and to the south end of that calisac are able to have some screening there as well, so they're not looking directly into our development.
Okay. That, that was just, I, I too listened to the May 27th planning commission meeting and read the minutes of the follow-up meeting on the 24th where they were discussing this. And when I first started reviewing this in preparation for that, for tonight, my, my major concern was property values, you know, and a decrease in property values for those homeowners. And it seemed as it, as, as the conversation ensued and the negotiation ensued, you were able to reach a, an agreement that was, you know, that supported all of the parties. So I would echo Mayor Bain's and council member Gerard's statements about, you know, that we like a spirit of cooperation and collaboration and it sure seems like it happened here overall. I just want to be sure that they, you know, they have, they have what they need to feel comfortable about, you know, this, this change that's happening. So-
It's not very often after we're done meeting with people that we still continue to get emails and phone calls to people's book. We're very happy about that part of things. It tells us we did things correctly.
It just feels like this residential area sort of, you know, kind of plunked in here all by itself and, you know, and, and I get that when you, when you buy something, you don't necessarily know what's coming, right? With, with development around you. So I do again, appreciate the willingness to take a really good look at this and try to meet the needs of everybody. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Beistrom?
Any further questions of the applicant tonight? All right, we'll bring conversation back to council and staff. Thank you again for being here. Any, so council members, there was- there was an update to your packet that was provided late in the day. Karen, I just want to make sure that we're referencing the same versions here. So I know you update, you emailed updates to the packet, and then you've also posted online. And so the online version that is at seven twenty seven twenty zero two on page one thirty two of our packet is the updated resolution that has been provided, and that is the same as what is in, what was emailed to council late this afternoon. I'll just pause. Okay, pause for a quick moment of clarification. Okay, thank you. And then I have a similar question to what council member Gerard had on our first item this evening. The resolution as proposed does not include or does not reflect anything related to fees. Is that correct? And so if, if council wanted to consider, that would be in a second motion this evening? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, you know, I'll just address the, the fee question head on here. I, I'm a little on the, I'm a little on the fence, a little torn. I appreciate that this section of property has taken a number of, there's been a number of different planned uses for it, and it's been down a path. I do though recognize that there is legitimate costs to us from a staff perspective on any of these comprehensive plan amendments. And so, and, and, you know, this is a necessary step to get this project ready for what is next and what you need, what the developer needs it to be in order to do this project. I am hesitant to grant a waiver of the request, of the fees as requested, but I'm open to conversation and thoughts that become, other council members may have on the topic. Maybe let's start first with the resolution, considering the comprehensive plan amendments, and then we'll see if there is any appetite to do a motion for the fee reduction. How does that sound? With that, council, I will entertain a motion for the resolution.
Mayor Bane?
Council member Gerard.
I'd make a motion for resolution number zero seven dash two seven dash two zero dash zero two. Resolution adopting a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use plan to re-guide a portion of property identified as section zero seven township zero thirty two range zero two one. That part of section once slash four dash S W one slash four S seventy three two R twenty one dash Wash County, Minnesota, lying north of south six hundred and sixty feet thereof and line westerly of, westerly line of Everton Avenue North, P A D number zero seven dot zero three two dot two one dot three four dot zero 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 seven to highway commercial.
Second.
Well stated, well stated. We have a motion from council member Gerard. We have a second from council member Husnick. Any additional discussion on this topic? Hearing none, Karen, could we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Council member Gerard.
Aye.
Council member Husnick. Council member.
Council member Husnick, you were muted or cut out.
I'm sorry, I, I, my vote is aye, affirmative.
Council member Bystrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Good luck with your project. I will pause, I will pause before we move on in our agenda just to see if there is appetite, appetite on the part of council to entertain the fee, the fee request.
Uh, Madam.
I will pause, please.
For the purpose of discussion, I would motion to deny that for the fee waiver as per what the commission, or at least the planning commission decided. I, I agree with, with the planning commission on that. So for the purpose of discussion, that's my motion.
There is a motion to deny on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second to deny. Further discussion on this item? Council member Gerard.
Uh, Mayor Bane, I can go along with this, but personally, I think whenever we get on this cusp or we start changing right at the thing, we've had this before. I would motion to split the difference and reduce it by two thousand and have the city take a two thousand dollar. Would be my preference.
One, well, the one comment I'd like to make, you know.
Council member, uh, Husnick, yeah.
Yeah, the previous request, really they had paid the full amount of money. It was just three thousand dollars was paid years ago, and then they, now they're paying another two thousand, which has come up to the five thousand dollar amount. There really wasn't a reduction if you really look at it that way. And so, you know, the, I think the planning commission did a good job of, of discussing this thing and, and working it out. And so that, that's why it was, that's why I made the motion the way I did.
I, I do have to chime in. I get, I'm, I'm a bit uncomfortable on the splitting the difference in the negotiation on these types of fees. I think, you know, we have the fee as stated on the fee schedule. It is, it, it, you know, it is as it is. If we negotiate one, we get into a period where we're negotiating, and there's always extenuating circumstances on these long tail projects. And I, I, I would support the motion that we deny the, the fee request. This, this is a fair amount of staff work, and I think the fee schedule reflects that. Any other feedback on this item? Again, the motion on the table is to deny the reduction in fees. And not hearing any further discussion. Karen, can we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Council member Gerard.
No.
Council member Husnick.
Aye.
Council member Bystrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane?
Aye. Motion passes. Appreciate for the project team, this is not the fee answer you wanted, but I am happy we got you down the road on the comprehensive plan amendment. We look forward to this project. Wish you all of the best in this project, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, that is the end of our regular agenda this evening. We did not have anything on as discussion only, so we will move right into staff updates this evening. Let's start with, let's start with Patrick this evening. We will move on to, after Patrick, we will move to Pete.
Uh, yes, mayor and council, I have no report other than we have the one point five et cetera million dollars from the CO Care Act in the bank, and are working towards the resolution, how to spend that, working on the budget, and the ten-year plan is still in process. Other than that, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions of Patrick this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to Pete and Amanda. And then after Pete and Amanda, we'll hear from Donovan.
Uh, good evening, your honor, members of council. The lawyers have no report tonight, but we are here to answer any questions, particularly if I can shuffle them off to Amanda if they come in, I mean, I don't like.
Wow, I agree.
You expected that, yep. Any questions for Pete slash Amanda this evening? We like it when the attorney report is very short and sweet. We will move on to Donovan. After Donovan, we'll pick up Dan.
Uh, mayor, members of council, we are kind of in the full swing of summer with some, a couple of long grass complaints and a really full agenda, planning commission agenda on the August twelfth. What I'm gratified to see is that there are three local businesses that are looking for expansion, you know, approval. And some, a couple of these have been kind of in the works for a year or more, so I'm glad they're finally, you know, made the formal applications, and we can hopefully get them, you know, you know, initiating their, their expansions. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from city council.
Any questions for Donovan this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to Dan. After Dan, we'll pick up Chief Newman. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I have no updates tonight, but if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Dan? Seeing none, uh, Ryan. I'm sorry, Chief Newman, and then we'll pick up Ryan.
I have nothing unless you have questions for me tonight.
Any questions for Chief Newman? Chief, I'm not sure, did you already provide, I'm not sure if it was council or fire board, did you provide an update on the new fire truck?
I'm not sure if I provided one with the council, but we currently took delivery of our engine tender. It will be housed at Station Two in Columbus. We are working on getting all staff through familiarization training, and the personnel that will be responding with the truck through driving training and pumping training, we expect to get that truck in service probably mid-August.
If we weren't in COVID remote mode, we could have a council show and tell, but that will have to wait for another day.
Sounds great.
Any questions, any other questions for Chief Newman? All right, we'll go to Ryan. After Ryan, we'll, Karen. Brian, go ahead.
Mayor, city council, city engineer Ryan Goodman. I'll first talk about the Highway ninety seven Goodview Avenue runabout improvement project. Things are moving nicely there. August first, we will shut down the traffic between sixty one and Goodview to allow for the transition areas to be completed. Contractor plans on having everything opened up to both routes, or both ways, as right now weather dependent, August twenty first. So that's going well with the project schedule there. We're still on board with MINDOT coming to the city council workshop on August seventeenth to talk about the Highway ninety seven planned improvements for two thousand twenty four between I thirty five and Highway sixty one. Local street project, that's still in progress. The area that's being worked on north of Broadway, that plans on starting to pave in that area next week. And then we'll follow up paving down on Apartment Lane and Falcon Avenue, and then we'll jump out to the rural areas of the city. So everything's moving well. Obviously, we've had some rain here and there. Hasn't really slowed down things too much based on the staging of construction we already earned in. And then, like Donovan said, a lot of activity on the, the backside of things moving forward, and maybe some stuff was sitting on the bench, seeing where COVID's gonna go or not go, and just wanted to release, so here we go. With that, I'll just open up with any other questions you might have.
Any other questions for Ryan this evening? Seeing none, Karen and then Sandy.
Mayor Bane, I don't, updates? No, no updates, but if there's questions. I know Sam had a question for me earlier about elections. I don't know if I answered those for you, Sam.
Yeah, you know, I actually, I got some of the answers I needed. The, the question from some elderly folks that were concerned about absentee ballots and that kind of thing. And, and at the time, until I researched it a little bit, I didn't really have a good answer for them because of this COVID thing. Otherwise, I would have just said, well, I put the library and you can do that. But I did move on and push information toward them where they can call the county and, and get that taken care of. Just on, on the same note there, I had some discussion with Patrick today about, is there any way we can make it easier for our seniors? Because some of these folks are more or less sequestered in their building. And so I guess they're gonna have to pretty much do it through the mail or something. And, and I know you can do it email. Well, if they have the same luck with emails I do, we want to help them out a little bit, so. I was just, that was one of my questions, if there's anything we could do to, to help our seniors and, and some of our older folks to make sure that they get that stuff in time, and then they, they get their vote in, so that was, that was it, so thank you.
The, the, there's the absentee ballot option. There is what they're calling curbside option. So for those individuals who cannot leave their vehicle, they can still come and vote curbside at their polling locations. And then the other options would be, you know, to actually physically go into the building. All social distancing rules are applying. I, I'm, I'm not sure or aware of what the status is of our elevator in the building and how that's being used. I know it's closed right now. I don't know how that is going to affect use of the stairs for any elderly individuals at, or in, or other individuals who may need to use the elevator. I'm assuming that the, it will be cleaned after each use.
Yeah.
So, but those are the options.
Sure, and, and I'll pass that on. The concern, I think, is a lot of folks, they really concerned about getting out in the public and, and doing what they have to do. So, but I'll pass that information on, so thank you.
Okay, so let me know if you have any other questions about it, or email me.
I appreciate it, thanks, thanks.
Council member Bystrum.
Um, Karen, would you be able to provide council kind of an overview of how the curbside voting works? You know, I just think that's an interesting concept, and I, I think it has a potential to be really highly utilized, but it would be nice to be able to answer that question if we're out and about in the community or if something pops up on social media. If you're able to do that, I would appreciate it.
Well, my understanding is they'll have election judges outside as well, and they'll have polling applications available for them. I think it, they fill it out and it goes into an envelope. These are, these are good questions for the county. You know, the city does have a joint powers agreement with Washington County, so there's not a lot of election stuff that the city has to do other than ensure that we have the location set up that there's election judges, and the county actually goes through the process of choosing those people and making sure that they're where they're supposed to be. So it's really, it's county questions. But my understanding is they can just drive up, be in their vehicle, they're given a ballot, they fill that out, it's placed in an envelope, and then they hand it to the election judge. And then from there, the election judge turns it in.
Imagine there's gonna be some concerns.
I do know that the county is, I'm sorry, Sam, go ahead.
Well, there'd be some concerns about weather in a case like that. You know, if you got a day where it's pouring down rain.
Right.
Bigger issue too, so, those are all things considered there, so.
Yeah, and I do know that the county is anticipating a much greater percentage of absentee ballots this year, so.
Well, thanks for the info, Karen.
Sure.
Any other questions for Karen? Sandy, welcome.
Thanks. The only thing I have is continuing to work on budgets. This week, we are gonna be, as the finance department, we're gonna be really heavily involved in the implementation of the new finance system. So we'll let you know how that goes, and we don't anticipate any problems and look forward to having a new system in place. Other than that, unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions? Budget and new system at the same time, conference on for finance? Yeah. Well, good luck with that, I know we're in good hands. All right, any other questions for Sandy? I think I've got all staff members that are on. We will start with council updates. Let's start with council member Husnick, and then we'll go to council member Bystrum.
Thank you, Mayor Bane. I attended the E D A meeting tonight, and I'm sure that you're gonna want to expand on this, so I'm not gonna double down on the E D A meeting. And I had, I, I didn't make any of the meetings, but I did get an email. A gentleman has a concern about our boat ramp, not, not enough water and hitting propellers and all that kind of stuff. And I know there's been some consideration for that and some work being done there, so that was a concern. The voting concern was just, we just discussed that here today too, so, or just a few minutes ago. So, or just a few minutes ago. Also, in my conversation with Patrick, I did talk about the building that burned, you know, just on the north side of Eighth Avenue there a couple of years ago. And what's the status of that thing? You know, well, apparently there's been a permit drawn on it now or, or something. So, because people have been asking about that. And, you know, that's a long time for blight to be sitting there. That's basically what it is, you know. And of course, when we're talking about that, one of the other things I mentioned this evening is conversations about our empty lots in the city of Forest Lake and some of them, I'm not sure why the owners don't take, if they're trying to sell them or something or take pride in whatever, let's knock down the weeds that are four and five feet tall there, you know. And so it, that's always kind of a sore spot. So that, that's been what's been happening since the last meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. Could I piggyback maybe on two of your items? Donovan, is the Lake Area Bank site on your radar? You know, the former Trade Winds retail spot, the weeds in that now vacant property have just really taken to town in the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, the owner has been notified.
Okay.
I hope to not bring in an abatement resolution, you know.
I know.
Action to council. But, so I think we'll take care. I think we have a mutual interest between city and private owner there to make sure it looks right.
Yeah. It's just such, and it's such a big space and such a key, key area. So yeah, thank you. And then the question did come up, it came up in our email, I believe, that went to full council. And then it came up also tonight in our EDA workshop session on the downtown committee kickoff around the boat ramp. And the suggestion was made that the access at Lakeside Memorial is actually owned by the city. Ryan, can you clarify that? And I don't know if it's something you know off the top of your head. I was under the impression that that was VNR controlled and there would be limited action we could do with it. But the group tonight felt otherwise. And certainly we've gotten some feedback that it's not in great condition. I just want to clarify whose responsibility that is.
City has an agreement. We're gonna look at it and see what it all entails.
Okay. I suspect even if we have responsibility, we may not have the options to drudge it like it needs. But, well, we'll see where that goes. So, okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Uh, council member Bystrom.
Um, yes, I too received the email on the boat ramp and I did roll that up to Patrick, who I know did reach out to staff and responded to me about some conversation and potential action that might be able to be taken there. So I imagine we'll be hearing more from them soon. Although I was on vacation last week, I did receive an update from the YMCA. We did have our, our monthly meeting last week and, you know, they, they've been really having some struggles financially and have made some pretty serious staffing decisions there. Many, they've let quite a few of their staff go. They still have some staff on furlough that they're gonna hang on to here for a bit. But the staff that they're retaining, the majority of them are going to be assuming regional roles. So for example, the executive director, Derek, will be responsible for the Forest Lake Shore View and Mountains View Y. Until they can get back on their feet, they've, you know, they've taken a pretty significant programming hit. So, but on the positive side of that, they are slowly but surely bringing some programming back as well, just really taking some cautions. They're going to start offering childcare again, for example, which will hopefully, you know, encourage some of the young families with children to get back to the Y and start working out and those sorts of things. So, so, you know, just some, just some, some rough, some rough times there for them, for sure. And then the senior center, meeting with them tomorrow about their twenty twenty-one budget. They too have experienced some significant budget shortfalls due to a decrease in programming revenue through this period of time. So there are some struggles potentially occurring there too that I'll be learning a little bit more about tomorrow and we'll be sure to circle back to either city staff or to council at our next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Gerard.
Uh, thank you. Just as councilman Husnick said, I attended the EDA meeting. I'll let you explain all of that. I also attended the planning commission last week. They just tabled a variance application. They were very thankful for the meeting we had with them a week or so ago. Both of those meetings, a lot of information. They, they really thought that the council did a nice job responding nicely on that. I also attended the watershed last week and they are, they signed off on that stormwater study that was brought up tonight. So that will be moving forward. And actually with commissioners on the watershed, they were excited to be working on something like this, something a little different and long-term, hopefully that they can help us out as far as that goes. So that was a good news. The bad news, there's about seven acres of flowering rush on Forest Lake. They will be treating it in early August. Gonna be tough to get a much smaller though. And then there's some purple loose leaf. It's unknown the scale, so they're gonna be doing a survey of the lake. There has been a ton of boat inspections, a little over thirty-six hundred of those. And then they're gonna be doing some work on curly palm, which where they may be changing the herbicide and whatnot. So that's all I have. The report. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions for council member Gerard? I'll just piggyback to your comments. We'll, I'll be in touch with Forest Lake Association President Jerry Gertner to talk about coming for a future workshop discussion. I know they are aligning their goals for two thousand twenty-one. And as we are entering into budget conversations, want to make sure we've got a good opportunity to have a working session so that there are, so that we're aligned going into budget seasons. And so we'll be inviting him to a workshop session, either, either our regularly third Monday or we'll carve out some discussion only portion on an upcoming session. So hope to get that scheduled here shortly. All right. Just a couple of quick updates. As council member Husnick and council member Gerard mentioned, we did have the downtown initiative kickoff meeting this evening. Those meetings are scheduled on an ongoing basis at five thirty on the fourth Monday of the month. The, we had, would you say, about twenty participants in all of them? About a full hour and a half of pretty robust conversation. We walked through kind of the history of what has gotten us to this point, some of what's already been done, and some of trying to sort through what's known and unknown as it relates to downtown redevelopment. We went through a SWOT analysis, talked about next steps. Really, the goal is to just get the, kind of get beyond the kickoff and start to put the, the structure together to get a long-term plan in place or kind of a work, a work plan in place. And so that will be certainly the goal of the next couple of sessions will be to take that feedback, take what's already been known at the staff level, at the EDA level, at the council level, and really get that work plan developed and get some consensus behind that. So they were a very participatory group. Appreciate everyone's feedback and participation. It was a good discussion. I would say, you know, certainly we had a, we had a good variety of both barriers and opportunities and some of the topics we talked about tonight came up and then some of the kind of frequent, frequent flyers for that list, things like downtown parking and some of those items we would expect to be on that long-term plan. Certainly got some attention this evening at the introductory level and look forward to taking that to the next step. And so, and those will be joint workshops to the extent that council wants to participate. You are welcome. And again, that will be the fourth Monday of each month. Also, just by way of kind of additional updates, I had another discussion today with the YMCA Equity Innovation Center and Forest Lake Area School District, that working group that's been working on the Everyone Belongs project. We are targeting a vision session in late September and then a series of work sessions to be scheduled in October to follow. Because of current COVID situations, we are planning for a remote working session and talking through how do we, you know, create a interactive working environment with about fifty people online if possible. And so we've kind of tossed a pretty big challenge over to the YMCA team to solution for us and they're gonna work on that and come back. As soon as I know those dates that are locked in, I'll certainly communicate those. And I did also hear tonight that, you know, kind of a follow-up to council member Bystrom, feedback about an update around the Y, that the Lino Lakes YMCA site is not, no longer going to be open as a YMCA site. They're gonna re, they're gonna transition that property and certainly that has some activity pressure here in Forest Lake. Because as, as before, we had our Y, a lot of our residents were going to Lino and using that YMCA. So that'll be interesting to see what happens with that activity. And as council member Bystrom said, they are under a lot of transition at the staff level, which is unfortunate, but understandable given our current situation. A quick fun note, I don't know if anybody caught it, last night we were featured on Lakefront Bargain Hunt on HGTV. I did not see the episode and I haven't seen a link. However, it is out there. I look forward to finding it online and taking a look. If any of you see it, please forward me on the information. I'm excited to see how we were featured. If we were not COVID, we'd do a watch party, but here we are, COVID. Maybe we do a remote watch party. We'll see. Anyway, it's fun to be on that list. And I think that is the, that is all that we have for updates this evening. Anything else that we haven't discussed? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by council member second Husnick, or a motion by council member Husnick, a second by council member Gerard. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard.
Aye.
Council member Husnick.
Aye.
Council member Bystrom.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. And we're adjourned this evening. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.